Coram and Custer Downer won't be able to make it tonight. He they're interning is Kind of a sad event.
It is.
Um, so I will call this regular meeting council of town of Midland to order Wednesday, April 21st, 2021, 7:02 PM. And I'll ask if there are any declarations of conflict. Seeing none. Thank you. Uh, I will take a moment to read the land acknowledgements. Uh, the town of Midland recognizes that is located on land, which is the traditional and treaty territory of the Anishinaabe people now known as the Chipewa Tri Council, the prize of Bosley First Nation, Rama First Nation, and the Georgina Island First Nation. This territory is within the pre-confederation treaty five and treaty 16, and included within the Williams Treaties of 1923. The town of Midland recognizes that it is located on land, which is the traditional territory here on Wendat and the historic homelands of the Métis, and that our town is home to a large and diverse community of indigenous peoples. At this juncture, I would ask counsel and folks at home to take a moment of silent reflection and perhaps give some thought to the folks who are currently caught up in the COVID-19 pandemic. For those people who are frontline workers and helping to support us as we get through day by day. Thank you. Um, should remind folks at home that this is being live streamed and broadcast Rogers Cable 53, I believe it is, and will be re broadcast throughout the week. It's also available on the town of Midland YouTube channel. Having said that, um, I have a motion then by councillor Cunningham. And second by councillor Gordon. If the contents of the regular council agenda for April 21, 21, 2021, be approved. Any comments or questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor? Thank you. That passes and the next motion is moved by Deputy Mayor Ross, second by councillor Cunningham. That the items related, sorry, the items unrelated recommendations contained within the April 2021, 2021 consent agenda is as consent items having been considered by council, be adopted with the exception of item 5.4.2 CSR dash 2021 dash 24. Request for draft plan of extension MD dash T dash 018 823 King Street, which will be considered under section 10, reports and other items withdrawn from the consent agenda for council's consideration. Any comments or questions regarding, I see councillor Gordon and then deputy mayor Ross.
Thanks. I'm not sure if Deputy Ross is going to speak to this as well, but I just wanted to highlight the Heritage Awards. That are on this, the problem is with these consent agendas, it's just kind of like passed and it's done and over with. And really, there's a two awards that were issued. One is the Heritage Merit Award at 9536 County Road 93, the Midland Gulf and Country Clubhouse. And the second, of course, tying with the golf theme is the 2021 Heritage Appreciation Award going to John Gordon and Rita Cote. Sorry?
You're stealing my thunder.
Oh geez. Okay. Well, you know what? I'm not going to go any, I won't talk anymore about it because some, you guys can fill in the blanks, but suffice to say that it wouldn't be good for us to just kind of let this slide through on the consent agenda without calling it out. So I'm glad there's some prepared words and I'll just, I'll defer.
Glad, I'm glad you were prepared to call it out. Thank you. And we are, we are going to have a little bit of a ceremony, but later on on the
Very good. Then I will stop talking.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Ross.
Thank you worship through you. I just wanted to, uh, verify that I am indeed a member at the Midland Golf and Country Club, but, um, there's no conflict at this point, but I just wanted to put that on the record that I am definitely a proud member of, at the club. So I look forward to the presentation or later this evening.
What's your handicap?
Don't, don't ask. I'd have to lie.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Um, any other comments or questions regarding the motion? Seeing none, all in favor, please? Thank you. Welcome councillor post. As I was saying earlier to council councillor downer can't be with us this evening. He's got a family pressing family matter to attend to. Uh, we wish him well in that. Uh, next I have a motion moved by councillor Shewski, second by councillor post, council resolved into committee of the whole. Comments or questions seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. It's over to you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you very much, your worship, and I'll pass it directly back to you with regards to 7.1 Heritage Award presentations. I'll take over after you're done those presentation. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Um, it's sort of a nice time of year when we get to recognize folks who are, have been contributing significantly to the heritage and history of the, the community. We typically award, we have awards for appreciation and a merit award. Uh, it's my pleasure to present the 2021 Heritage Appreciation and 2021 Heritage Award. This evening on behalf of council and the Heritage Committee and residents of Midlands. The Heritage Appreciation Awards recognize individuals or groups who have made significant contributions to the promotion or support of local heritage, contributed to the promotion and preservation of the town's history. Or who have made a significant contribution to the preservation of one or more local heritage assets. First, uh, 2021 Heritage Appreciation Award recipient is Mr. John Gordon, who's with us this evening. John Gordon is one of Canada's preeminent golf historians who has authored eight books and numerous articles. In conjunction with the centennial anniversary of the Midland Golf and Country Club in 2019, John Gordon researched the history of the club, its grounds, its members, and authored a 67-page book titled The Gem of Southern Georgian Bay, Middle Gulf and Country Club, Our First 100 Years. The book includes pictures throughout the club's history and is currently available in electronic format through the club's website. And it gives me great, on, it's a great privilege to present the appreciation award to Mr. Gordon, and I would ask if Mr. Gordon had anything he'd like to say to, to council and to residents. You're on mute, Mr. Gordon.
You're muted, you're muted, John. John, you're muted.
There we go.
Okay, thank you. That's the first time I've been muted in a long time. It's uncharacteristic for me. But thank you, your worship. Um, I've been a longtime member of Midland Golf and Country Club, a longtime resident with my family of Midland. Um, I'm a very proud member of both. Uh, I'd like to thank you and certainly, uh, members of council and the, uh, and the committee, especially Reddy Hackstetter, who was the, who nominated me for this award. The book I'm very proud of and certainly I, I should also thank James Playfair, who was a, you know, one of the the foundations of our town in so many ways, the Curling Club, um, Little Lake Park. You know, so many things, including the golf course, and, uh, it's, it's a, it's a real honor. This will, this will hold a special place in my memory. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. And perhaps when all that research, you might have found out what the deputy mayor's handicap was.
I, I have been sworn to secrecy, but I'm sure that I can be bribed to, to reveal it if, you know, if any members of council want to drop by and drop off the appropriate honorarium.
I suspect the deputy mayor has one to go to Benny to come in. Thank you very much.
Congratulations, John.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Ross. My longtime friend.
Um, our, our second 2021 Heritage Appreciation Award recipient is Madame Rita Cote. It gives me a particular sense of privilege to present this to Madame Cote. I met her several times and, uh, members of her family who I'm sure are watching. Rita Cote is an intrinsic part of the Catholic heritage of Midland. She has spent her life contributing to both local churches and the community as a whole. Rita has dedicated over 40 years of service to canvassing for the Heartstroke Foundation, Cancer Society Salvation Army. In addition, she has dedicated 16 years volunteering at the mental health center, soup kitchen, visiting and shopping for the boys at the ridge and serving on the auxiliary. In the church, much more work as an usher, the cat, uh, with the Catholic Women's League and the Legion of Mary, as well as singing in two choirs. I didn't know you sang in two choirs. Love to hear you sing something. So it's my honor and privilege, and I'll quote today to present you with the appreciation award from the Heritage Committee and on behalf of council and the residents and Heritage Committee. I present you with this award and offer my utmost congratulations. You'd like to say something to residents and the council? Uh, please, please do so.
You can talk them. You can say something. They'll hear you. Say thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
This is all new to us with this, uh, live Zoom meetings and stuff. So she's trying her best here.
Well, she's, she's doing very well. She's doing a lot better than I, I never find, I never find a mute button.
Yeah, me either. There she is.
Congratulations and thank you for your service to the community.
You're welcome.
Say, say hello to, say hello to, uh, Duncan and to Michelle and to all the rest of family, please.
Let's say okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Thank you. Um, the last, uh, part of this awards component is the Heritage Merit Award. And the town of Midland has been awarding plaques to heritage homes and buildings in the town since 1994. And to date have awarded 47 Heritage Merit Awards in recognition of property owners who preserve and enhance Midlands built heritage. Tonight, we present the 2021 Heritage Merit Award to the Midland Golf and Country Club, recognizing the heritage significance of its clubhouse located at 9536 County Road 93. Accepting the award, the award rather, on behalf of the Midland Golf and Country Club is club president Charles Segwin. Property of 9536 County Road is currently owned by and operated as the Midland Golf and Country Club. The clubhouse was constructed between 1917, when the land was purchased by James Playfair, and 1919, when the golf course officially opened on May 31, 1919. The original clubhouse remains largely intact. Including the interior lounge that remains very similar to how it was back in the day. The original building also included three upstairs bedrooms and dining and a dining room. In 1974, the clubhouse was expanded to enlarge the veranda, dining room and kitchen. Throughout its ownership, the Midland Golf and Country Club has continued to preserve the architectural and historical aspects of the clubhouse. And it's my great privilege and honor to present to Mr. Charles Segwin, president of the club. The Award of Merit plaque on behalf of council and the town of Midland. And thank you, sir, for your efforts in preserving the club and continuing its rich heritage. Would you like to say a few, few words, sir?
Thank you. On behalf of the over 300 members of the Midland Golf and Country Club, many who have been members for several decades, some over 50 years. That's my extreme honor to accept this, accept this award. I want to thank the council, um, and the committee, especially Renee Hoxetter for, for this nomination. We're very proud of the club. Uh, it's an interesting building, presents its challenges being over 100 years old, but it is certainly a historical, uh, part of the, part of the area that we, that we highly respect. So thank, thank you very much for the reward on behalf of all the members.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
I, I might say that I, uh, received, I was talking to my brother-in-law who plays Royalism fairly often. And, uh, and, uh, Erkin kept thinking of it, no one in the other car course, rough course, uh, courses over there. He said, it's one of the finest courses he's played. He plays in Spain. He plays in Portugal. He says it's absolutely fabulous. So congratulations on that, too.
Thank you very much.
And congratulations to all award winners. Thank you for all your efforts in furthering heritage preservation and promotion of the town of Midland. Again, congratulations to all and our sincere thanks and appreciation.
Congratulations, everyone.
Deputy Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back to you.
Thank you very much.
Very much. And congratulations to all. That's fantastic. Uh, always a pleasure. It's unfortunate we have to do on Zoom. It's always much, uh, much more grand in the chambers, but congratulations all and thank you for all your hard work, everyone.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Next up, we, uh, will move on to our deputations and petitions that we have done. We have no public hearings or meetings. And we have, uh, a report with regards to wastewater master plan. I understand where is a presentation coming forward by, uh, Ms. Wilson. Is that correct?
Yes, Deputy Ma, yes, Deputy Mayor, uh, Jane Wilson is with Jill Richards and Associates, and she was a project lead for, for this project that we've undertaken over the last year and a half. And I'll turn it over to Jane. She has a presentation, some comments, uh, on, on the report.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. Ms. Wilson, it's all yours. Thank you for coming this evening.
Great. Thanks, Andy. And thanks for having me here tonight. This presentation lacks any references to golf, so hopefully you can forgive me as I make my way through. Uh, so as Andy said, my name is Jane Wilson and I'm with Jill Richards and Associates. And I will be presenting the findings of the town's wastewater master servicing plan. If you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, this master plan was completed under the municipal class EA framework. Uh, and so it was designed to satisfy the requirements of schedule A, A prime and B projects. Uh, and so tonight I'll be presenting the findings of phase one and phase two of the MEA class EA process. Uh, next slide, please. The overall objective of this master plan is to put together essentially a roadmap for the next 20 years of infrastructure renewal, replacement and extensions within the town of Midland. There are a number of issues that were considered as part of this master plan and they're all highlighted here. Uh, but the main goal is really to put that plan in place for infrastructure replacement and renewal over the next 20 years and even beyond. If you can go to the next slide, please. Uh, the study involved five main steps. Uh, the first was identifying the existing infrastructure constraints and capacity. The second was determining the future growth anticipated within the town. And then we modeled that future growth to look at the limitations within the existing system. And once we understood the existing and future limitations, we identified how means of addressing those capacity constraints. An overarching part of the master plan process is consultation with public agencies and other stakeholders. And that was a key component of this project as well. And I'll touch on that again towards the end. Uh, next slide. Uh, this is the town of Midlands existing collection system. Uh, there are three main trunks within the system. Uh, the Bay Shore trunk, the Young trunk and the Pillsbury trunk. There are also seven sewage pumping stations, uh, the largest of which is the Bay Street Sewage Pumping Station, which is located just to the west of the wastewater treatment plant. I will note that there are a number of combined sewers within the town. Uh, this means that both stormwater and wastewater is conveyed within the system in some areas. And I'll also note that within the core area, there are some sewers that are greater than 60 years old. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, this is the Midland Wastewater Treatment Plant and all of the flows within the community are conveyed to this plant. Uh, right now it's operating at about 60% of its rated capacity. Uh, the plant was constructed in the mid 1960s. It's been upgraded significantly twice since then. Uh, the last major upgrade was in the mid 90s. And so because of the age of the existing infrastructure and the timing of the last upgrade, there are a number of components within the plant that are at or near the end of their useful life. Because of the combined sewers that I mentioned earlier, there is the potential for high flows to the plant during wet weather events. Uh, and so to address that or mitigate some of that issue, there is a storm equalization tank on the site. And so what happens under a high wet weather flow is flows are diverted to that tank. And then as the flows subside, they're pumped back into the plant and treated. Uh, in instances where the capacity of the plant and that equalization chamber is exceeded, uh, the flows will bypass into Midland Bay. And there are two places within the town of Midland or bypasses can occur under wet weather events. Uh, the first is at the Bay Street sewage pumping station and the second is at the wastewater treatment plant. These bypasses are a somewhat regular occurrence within the town and they occurred every year within the five years under review as part of the master plan. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, so once we had established the existing conditions within the collection system and the treatment plant, uh, we looked at growth to 2041. And so projections were developed to 2041. Uh, because there are impacts on the collection system that depend on where development occurred. We also developed a beyond 2041 scenario that looked at additional development in each of the potential growth areas. And so this figure shows the estimated or the approximate areas where growth is anticipated to occur within the town. Uh, when I'm talking about the plant and subsequent slides, I'll be talking about the 2041 projections. On the collection system side, we tended to focus on the beyond 2041 scenario because of the uncertainty with respect to where growth will occur. If you could go to the next slide, please. Uh, so this is the collection system constraints with the 2021 to 2041 population. You can see there are four areas that are constrained within the existing collection system. Looking at the chart on the top of the page, you can also see that there is an increase in bypasses during wet weather events at the plant. Um, as growth occurs over time, uh, these, this increase would have to be mitigated by either an increase in treatment capacity at the plant or by an increase in that equalization storage volume. If you go to the next slide, please. Uh, in the beyond 2041 population projection, uh, so you might have to click again. Uh, you can see that the exist, the four areas in the previous slide still have constraints. And there's in addition to, in addition of a significant extra constraint along the Pillsbury line in the south of the system due to development along the Highway 12 County Road 93 intersection. Uh, so you might have to click again. Uh, and then you can also see in this timeframe, uh, the Bayport sewage pumping station capacity has exceeded. Uh, that's in the north of the community and the main sewage pumping station is also approaching its capacity. Uh, next slide, please. Sorry, one more. And again, uh, after we looked at the collection system, we looked at the capacity of the wastewater treatment plant. We assessed the theoretical rated capacity of each of the unit processes against the future loading conditions anticipated. Uh, you can see from this slide, uh, that there is the potential to need to expand the screening within the next five years. I need to increase the capacity of the primary clarifiers within the next 10 to 15. Uh, there's also an immediate need to address the deficiency within the existing iteration tanks. Uh, looking at the secondary clarifiers and the chlorination chamber, uh, these also get flagged on this slide as needing an upgrade. Um, but whether or not these require an upgrade or not is dependent on how the additional wet weather flows are managed. If they're treated at the plant or if they are stored in an additional equalization chamber. And I'll talk about those two options in the next slide. You can go to the next slide. There we go. Uh, so based on the findings of the assessment at the wastewater treatment plant, we identified a number of upgrades required at the plant. Uh, these are a combination of infrastructure renewal projects and projects to accommodate future growth. Um, there were two options that we looked at to address the increase in wet weather flows. Uh, the first one was the addition of a secondary clarifier. Under that option, wet weather flows would be treated through the plant and then discharged into Midland Bay at the time they occur. Uh, and the other option, uh, an equalization tank would be an additional equalization tank would be constructed. Uh, and the plant would continue to operate similar to how it does now. When the capacity of the plant is reached, flows would get diverted. They would be stored in the equalization tank and then pumped to the plant once the high flows subside. Uh, because of the potential impacts of the King Street rejuvenation project, uh, we have recommended that the town continue to monitor flows at the plant to better understand the impacts of that construction project on peak flows to the plant before proceeding, uh, with one of these options or the other. Both of these have the potential to address the issue and are completely viable. Uh, but that additional monitoring would help in determining the ultimate capacity required here. Uh, for the purposes of budgeting, we've carried forward option, the option of the equalization storage tank. The cost of these options are similar, but there are some differences in terms of when and how the, the cost is allocated between existing and growth. Um, so under option three, which was the equalization tank, uh, we've identified a number of repairs or upgrades that are required. Uh, so the first is about $3 million in general lifecycle repairs at the wastewater treatment plant. And this is due to many years of deferred maintenance since the last major upgrade at the plant. The next capital project is a new equalization tank. Uh, the one after that is a headworks replacement. Uh, the one after that is the aeration system upgrades. We've also identified a new primary clarifier that was, if you'll remember, in the 10 to 15-year horizon. Uh, we've put in a new UV, uh, which may be required pending the outcome of further study on the existing chlorination, dechlorination system, a septic receiving system, a septic receiving station upgrade. Uh, we've also included a nutrient management facility assessment, uh, to look at options to address the, uh, current issues with the digesters. Given that they are near the end of life, although have adequate capacity. We've also included for budgeting purposes, the cost of a new nutrient management facility, although the cost of that would need to be determined based on the outcome of the nutrient management facility assessment. In total, you can see there is an investment required of about $24 million. 40% of that is attributed to growth and new development. And 60% approximately is related to infrastructure renewal. Uh, if you could go to the next slide, please. I've also broken up the cost based on the timing. You can see from this chart that most of these projects are required within the next 10 years. So it'd be considered short or near-term projects. Um, there's about $2 million to address the, the aeration upgrades, uh, in the immediate term, and then everything else is beyond that. The timing of these upgrades would likely be contingent on, on when the wet weather flow upgrades take place. Um, some of these lifecycle repairs could happen on an ongoing basis, uh, or they could be deferred until a major upgrade occurs related to addressing some of these other concurrent issues. Uh, but again, the total is the same as about $24 million in upgrades required in the next 10 to 15 years. Uh, so there is a significant investment required in infrastructure at the wastewater treatment plant. Um, this is a combination of a need to address growth, um, but also to address some deferred maintenance that's occurred over the years. Uh, next slide, please. Uh, on the collection system side, we've identified, uh, projects that are required to accommodate growth in the future. This table summarizes the projects and the anticipated capital costs. All of these costs are attributable to growth. I just want to highlight one project and that's the new Pillsbury trunk sewage pumping station. Uh, it's in near the intersection of Highway 12 and County Road 93. Uh, this pumping station is required to, uh, convey flows up to the Young trunk, uh, where there is adequate capacity to convey them to the plant. You'll remember from the earlier slides that there was a significant capacity constraint on the Pillsbury trunk. And so we did look at options which included pumping to Pillsbury and upgrading the Pillsbury trunk. Uh, and then also this option to pump north and the option to pump north is the one that is preferred for a number of technical and economic reasons. Uh, the total cost of that project is about $8 million. Um, the other project on here I'll highlight is the new Bay Shore North Sewage Pumping Station. And then the rest of these projects are relatively small upgrades to existing sections of sewers along each of the different trunks. Uh, next slide, please. Um, an important part of the class environmental assessment process is considering the environmental and land use considerations. At the plant itself, we acknowledge that there is adjacent residential development already. And there is the potential for more residential development. Uh, so as works, uh, advance at the plant, noise and odor considerations will need to be at the forefront. Uh, in terms of the collection system recommendations, all of those recommendations are along existing road right-of-way. And so we're not expecting any major impacts to natural, uh, natural resources, archaeological resources or cultural heritage resources. Although in some instances, additional studies may be required to confirm those things. Uh, we're not expecting any major impacts. Uh, next slide, please. Um, again, another key component of the class EA process is public and agency consultation. As part of this project, an engaging Midland website was set up and updated throughout the assignment. We issued notices at key project milestones to agencies, developers and members of the public. Uh, we also held a virtual public information center in the fall of last year. We also held a virtual public information center in the fall of last year. We held two sessions, one for developers and one for the general public. Both of these were well attended, and if you're interested. They are posted on the town's website, so you can go back in time and view these. If you go to the next slide, please. And that brings me to the end of the formal part of this presentation. Like I mentioned, the Class EA process for this master plan requires completion of phase one and two of the MEA process. And so that has been documented already in the draft master plan report. Once council approves issuing the notice of completion. The notice will be issued and that report will be filed for the mandatory 30 day review period. Once that 30 day review period has passed, if there are no outstanding issues. The town will then be in a position to implement any of the projects identified within this master plan. In this case, all of the projects we identified fall within schedule A, A prime and B. So there's not a need for additional Class EA phases to be completed prior to implementation. If you go to the next slide. That's the end of my presentation. I know that was a lot packed into 10 minutes or 11 minutes. I'm certainly happy to answer any questions, and I know Andy's available as well. If there's anything you'd like to ask.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciate that, Ms. Wilson, and I'm sure we'll have a few questions for you. I see Counselor Maine, then Counselor Gordon. Counselor Maine?
Thank you so much for the presentation. I really enjoyed the public information session in the fall. I had lots and lots of questions and it was great to digest all this information. You start realizing that's as pretty important as the numbers start tallying up. Pretty quickly into the millions and millions and millions of dollars. Very much like how the plant. Is broken down into different projects of, and so it's not just one big mega expansion. It's, you know, different projects here and there. So that's fantastic. Just the one question is on the updated pump stations. Obviously, you mentioned the one for 12 and 93, and but then also the Sunnyside one. The Sunnyside pump station, that would only be growth. Related, that wouldn't be putting a pump station to the existing Sunnyside. Because those, that subdivision. Is largely unserved. There is no infrastructure in the area. So is that specifically towards growth in that area? Thank you.
Through you, your worship. The question on the Sunnyside pump station is a good one because there is an existing development there that services would likely be extended to. As part of future development to the north of that area. So when we calculated the capacity of that pumping station. We would have been looking at new development. And the requirement to connect the existing systems within that area that are not currently connected to sewers. So it's a, it's in all cases, new connections. But it's a combination of new growth and connecting existing development in that area.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mr. Campbell. You have something to add?
Yes, Deputy Mayor. Just for the residents watching and for, for council. We get a lot of questions about when will Sunnyside get serviced? And, and what you've seen through this study. Is how we would go about servicing if and when we ever do it. But it really depends on that development, that vacant land up to Burnell being developed. And I don't see that happening personally in the next 20 years. So when you get the phone call about when, when is sanitary services coming to Sunnyside? It's not anytime soon.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Counselor Gordon?
Thanks a lot for the presentation. It was a really good read ahead of time. Still don't pretend to understand a lot of it, but. There's a couple of things. Do we have the ability or we've been factoring in on the potentially the capacity to share services with? For example, T Township or any parts of Penantang Machine in future growth? I know Penantang Machine is clearly. Sunnyside and beyond. But I, I don't know, at some point we talked about potentially. You know, combining some of these services as we upgrade our plant. And the other thing was a digester alternative. I believe Mr. Campbell had spoken to me about a couple of years ago. And they were so gracious to give me a tour and show me how well operating that plant is. That the University of Guelph was experimenting with it. I'm just wondering, any of that come into fruition in our, in our, in any of our plans? Is that something that could work?
Mr. Campbell, I see you have your hand up and then I'll go to Ms. Wilson.
Yeah, so the nutrient management, that was that last project that Jane talked about for half million dollars in a future study. Or future construction of over $3 million. So that, that is still one of the projects that is out there as a solution. As we have capacity in that. Digestor in the short term, but it's getting, it's 25 years old and near end of life. So. Yes, more work will need to be done and that technology that we talked to you before about that you just mentioned is, is viable today. And other municipalities use it and we'll look at it more closely. So that was to that question. The other question. Can you repeat it, please?
Just about the potential of, of, you know, bringing in. Sewage from T Township or from Penantang. Do we have the, any plans or capacity to help service our neighbors?
So right now we do take. Sewage from K, from the museum there. Some of the martyr shrine has asked about coming into our system and, and. Maybe some other development on the west end of, of T Township. You know, we've had those discussions with them. You know, they haven't. T hasn't decided that they want to connect more into our system. So we, we've put it out there. As a, an option. To, to do that, but you know, they're, they're still looking at their system. Pen Tang Machine has a relatively new plant in their system. And, you know, they, they have sufficient capacity. The discussions with Pen Tang Machine were on sharing was more on the water side than the wastewater side.
Ms. Wilson, anything to add? Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mayor Strathern, and then I'll go back to Counselor Maine.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Thank you for the presentation. It's a bit of an eye opener when you dry his water, actually, when you see some of the amounts, but. It's also factoring in growth, which is something we're looking forward to. We've heard that once we hit a certain capacity commitment level for our facility, the waste treatment facility. And we need to start, I believe need to start scoping out a new facility. So the current facility with the proposed upgrades for $24 million will keep us within those planning limits or. Or at what point might we have to start considering a new facility or some sort of an arrangement with Penantang Machine, which has a new plant and. Stand T is now talking about upgrading their plant.
That's awesome.
So in this study, we looked to the 20 year horizon at the plant. And so there were upgrades required to increase the capacity of the plant to accommodate growth. Part of that was related to the wet weather flows, but part of that is ultimately related to your average day flows. Which is what you'd be thinking about when you're allocating permits to new development. And so within the 20 year horizon. The plant has. General adequate, has adequate capacity or could be expanded in a relatively straightforward way. To accommodate additional flows. That plant was originally designed for a larger ultimate capacity than is there now. So there is room to construct the additional primary clarifier we identified in the 10 to 15 year horizon. There's also room for another secondary clarifier. There's room for another eration train. So there's a lot of room on that site to expand with the treatment technology that is there. And so when you get to your 85%. Of your plant capacity being committed. At that time, you would look at conducting a schedule C Class EA for the expansion. And consideration then would be given to. Expanding with conventional technology, expanding with small footprint technology or moving to a new location and a new plant. Or potentially sharing services with an adjacent municipality. But that is really towards the end of the planning horizon within this master plan. Because you're only at 60% of your rated capacity right now. Andy, it looks like you have something to add.
Mr. Campbell?
Yes, and you're, you're aware that the county is going through their municipal comprehensive review. And with the new rules of, for the province on our growth deadlines. And the county review, we have to, within the next two years, look and change our planning horizon from 2041 to 2051. And in this year's capital budget, we did put. Additional money to take this study for the next 10 years. Hopefully it, we won't use all that money that council's approved for that, but. We just finished this study and we immediately have to open it back up and do a little bit more work on this to meet the county and provincial requirements.
You have a follow up, your worship?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This has more to do with septicage. There's $2 million in the budget for. Creating new or improving existing septicage, and yet the bulk of our septicage. I think 24,000. Loads, if you like, come from tiny, and I forgot how many thousand come from. Tay and from Midland is something like 800. Roughly. Pump outs, if you like. Would we? Need to incur the $2 million worth of expenses were we to. Decline to accept septicage from the other municipalities? Understand there are a few places left anymore who will accept, but.
Mr. Campbell or Ms. Wilson? I'm not sure.
I'll take that. Yeah, so. The, the money is, you know, increasing capacity and increasing the competency of, of that. Aspect of our, our treatment train. If we were to reduce our, our volumes because we are restricting. Waste coming from other municipalities. Really what we have to focus on the short term is odor control in that. So we wouldn't be spending that full amount, but we will have to spend. You know. Couple hundred thousand dollars maybe just to deal with the odor side and not increase the volume capacity side if we. Stop receiving material. But again, we raised our rates this year. Council did approve raising the rates. And part of that is raising the money over time so that we would collect enough. External funds from the external users to pay for that upgrade.
So we can continue to be good neighbors as long as the good, our other good neighbors continue to pony up the cost. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, worship. Any other first time question before I go to Counselor Maine? Counselor Maine, you're up, sir.
Wanted to make a quick point. It was a question that we asked in the fall and it was very eye opening. It was a question about microplastics and how to prevent microprosics from getting into Georgia Bay. It sounds like there are some great pilot programs on Georgian Bay with some of our neighboring municipalities. I think Collingwood, maybe Perry Sound. Working with Georgian Bay forever and they're basically putting little filters on people's laundry machines. And so. Instead of putting a big filter at the plant. We can decentralize and put filters throughout our community. So that's a great program to watch how successful the programs are at the other municipalities. And then look to implement it here. I know it's not quite wastewater related, but I thought I'd throw it in there. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Maine. Appreciate it. Mr. Deno, do you have something to add, sir?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Now, I just wanted to, to make a comment and certainly commend the work that was done here. I think Andy explained to me, this is. I think perhaps the first time we've, we've done an evaluation of this, this kind. For this duration. And again, I think council needs to be commended for sponsoring. The ability to do this work. Very, very important as we've seen in some other areas that we have. Good data so that we can make better decisions. And certainly the perspective that this gives us is very important as we consider how we. Continue to grow Midland. So I wanted to thank Jane. I did participate in one of her. Her fall sessions. I found it very interesting as, as Counselor Maine said. And I'd like to thank Andy and Andre and, and his team and of course council. Thank you.
Well said, Mr. Deno. Nothing more important to our citizens than being able to turn that water on and have a fresh, clean water to drink and. Be able to flush that toilet. And we can't thank you enough. So thank you, Mr. Campbell. Always a pleasure. And Ms. Wilson, thank you very much for your presentation. A wonderful job and thank you for coming this evening.
Great, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have a motion that came out of this presentation. It's that staff report CSR 2021 dash 26. Six Midland wastewater master service in plan dated April 21st, 2021 be received. And that council adopt the final wastewater servicing. Master plan dated October 2020. And direct staff to issue the notice of completion as per the municipal class environmental assessment process. I need a mover in a second or Counselor Maine, I'll have you move. And second by Counselor Gordon. All those in favor or any question, comments with regards to this motion? All those in favor? So pass. Thank you so much. Next up. On the agenda, we have the notion, sorry, to notice that was a pulled item. That staff report CSR 2021 day dash 24. Request for the draft plan extension MD dash T dash 0108. Eight, two, three, King Street dated April 21st, 2021. We receive and that council grant an extension of grass plant. Draft plan of subdivision pursuant to section 51. Thirty-three of the planning act for file number. MD dash T dash 0108, eight, two, eight, two, three, King Street attachment number two. For a period of two years to April 27th, 2023. And that council approved the revised draft plan condition, note 12. Revision. As outlined in attachment three. I need a mover in a second to get this on the floor. Moved by Counselor McGinn, second by Counselor Cunningham. I understand that Counselor Maine pulled this item, so I'll allow you to have the first opportunity. Counselor Maine?
Oh, thank you so much. I, I pulled the item not really to, to object to it, but really to discuss it. As I've said before, I'm not really the biggest fan of extending draft plans. It's kind of like asking the teacher for an extension on assignment. You know, you can only ask for so many extensions. And so there really, that's kind of understanding is. What's the limitations of the red line revisions and should we let it lapse and then have a new product come forward? The reason why I wanted to ask the question, I'd love to hear from Mr. Winea about. This, because I certainly missed the planning and development meeting, but it's all good. Because the really, the point is we're talking about housing. And it always comes back to missing middle opportunities. And so this. Development, it's from 2009. It's a, I want to say a little bit outdated. It's a little bit kind of suburban, kind of car oriented, if you will. It's great that they've kind of increased the built form a little bit with. Our townhouses. But the missing middle stuff is really kind of about. The in between apartments and. Townhouses and how there's a whole bunch of new built form housing typologies that would be appropriate for this subdivision. So. Instead of singles, they become doubles or triples or quads. Townhouses become stacked towns or you have apartments and you have all these different built form. You have a higher intensity built form. So. That's really the question is. Could you put more units onto this and, you know, achieve the same. High profitability for the development community, high tax rates for the municipality. You know, more walkability, more pedestrians, more transit friendly subdivision. So really, that's kind of the open question that I had, and I'd love to hear from staff about. Do we just let this lapse and then have the great development team? Put forward a new refreshed subdivision plan. I know it's a bit of. Some hurdles going through the planning process, but I just wanted to ask the question if. Maybe that's something that could be considered. So thank you.
Mr. Campbell, you can answer?
Yeah, I'll take a, a start at and then I'll turn it over to Michael Winia, who's with Skelton Bromwell, who's our contracted professional planner. At this point. So the Pratt development, they've put a lot of effort, money, design into this over the years. They had some. Constraints on stormwater outlet, which is why they couldn't develop in the past. They finally. Resolve that through the procurement of adjacent land. And they're going through the red line process as we speak, but we're not ready today to approve a red line and. It's really, but it, but it is at the end of the. Previous deadline for the draft plan. So the recommendation at this point is let's extend the, the draft plan for, for two years. Let Pratt, you know, work through revisions to the red line. That has to come back to council, the comments that you made, Counselor Maine. You know, can be considered, can be further discussed with, with the developer over that two, two year period. And, you know, I, I believe they are. Bringing a, a product that they know is required in the town that they can. They believe they can sell in the town. And they have increased the density on that site from what it previously was in, in their proposed red line that isn't in front of you. That's not in front of you today to consider, but it will be in front of you in, in the near future. But I can turn it over to Michael Winia and Michael can add some. Planning comments instead of my engineering comments.
Mr. Winia, welcome to a council meeting and thank you if you don't mind sharing some information.
Certainly, Deputy Mayor. Thank you very much. And thank you, Andy, for, I think aptly summarizing the, the situation. With this file, as was indicated, the files being with the municipality for some time. Time more recently was by the applicant to this plan of subdivision in relation to adjacent lands. Where plan of subdivision is also in process as well as in relation. And appeals related to the official plan. So we have an opportunity through the red line revisions to address some of the comments that. So we have an opportunity through the red line revisions to address some of the comments that Counselor Maine put forward. The red line revision process, they're already proposing the significant red line revisions to that draft plan. And we can have a discussion as to any other possibilities that we may be able to consider in reviewing that plan as we work through that process. In terms of working through that process, we're going to be having discussions with them in terms of what they propose so far, opening up lines of communication in terms of looking at any opportunities for any further revisions to address the comments made this evening. And then we'll be coming back forward to council with recommendations. The reason we recommended going to a two-year extension was that they originally requested five years. But given that there's a clear intent here to alter the plan of subdivision to work with the municipality, we think two years is more than sufficient to deal with the various issues there and bring forward a new plan for council's consideration. And that plan would have an appropriate new lapse date assigned to it. Again, not, you know, with an idea that it's going to move forward to some series of renewals.
Thank you. Follow up, Counselor Gordon? I mean, Counselor Maine?
Oh, I guess that that's great. I'm just a little envious of seeing some of the great handsome developments, apartment buildings going up in Berry and saying, oh, you know, wouldn't that be great here? Because we see William Street, they're looking at an apartment building, we have a new four-story hotel. And you're going to certainly see it in more intensification on King Street. I guess that's the question. It sounds like there's a little lots of flexibility with the red line revisions. And so that was really the question is, how much can you red line? Or do you need a new draft plan? But it sounds a red line revisions is quite flexible enough that we'll be able to make some changes required, or they will make the changes that we'd all like to see, I guess. Is that the right way of putting it? Thank you.
That's right. Through through the through the deputy mayor, we they can make some changes and we'll have discussions with them relative to those changes will prompt maybe some of that discussion relative to some of the comments from this evening. And that the process for red line revision is fairly broad. What really determine has to make determination has to be made as to how that red line revision is processed, whether or not we should allow for further public opportunity for input, given the scale of any changes. And then the the process in terms of how that evolves in terms of a decision before council. But there is some latitude there and it would be more preferable to work through that process building on the approvals rather than starting from square one. We really don't need to start from square one. We can build on what's there.
So wonderful. Counselor Maine, you had one follow-up, last follow-up?
Yeah, absolutely. That's perfect. I think that's what I wanted to hear is that we have the flexibility, the red lines, we're able to kind of tweak it. One quick comment, I know that we kind of hit a roadblock with stormwater. We almost did a big stormwater management plan for this thing. Again, I can't stress enough low impact development and how, you know, we can avoid large costly stormwater ponds. I mean, that's what we have on the site right now is a bunch of open ditches on on the site where the soccer balls end up. And that's the next, the final point is, thank you to Pratt for their Parkland dedication. We've all been really enjoying the soccer field. They're amazing. So thank you.
Hope we're back in there real soon. Mayor Strathern?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Pratt has been fairly consistent in terms of trying to get the project off the ground. And clearly, the problem's been stormwater management. One proposal was a sub basin study where that would cover quite a considerable area and they were going to fund that. But they were able to solve the problem through land acquisition to the south and and part of that acquisition and was a an environmental and natural heritage study, which I believe is now at the L P A. And I'm just wondering what that will do to the two-year time timeline for them moving their the rest of the project forward while they wait for that.
Mr. Campbell, you care to answer?
Through you, Deputy Mayor, to your worship. Pratt Developments, this was one of the appeals to the L P A on our official plan. It was just adopted in February after going to the L P A. So this, in the transition details of of our official plan was that this development, because it was already draft approved, could continue to be developed under the old official plan rules and their appeal. And we haven't finished our our settlement offer with them and that'll be coming to to council in in the future. You know, that that process really is trying, I believe, by Pratt to ensure that they can develop as per their approvals and then the suggested red lines they they wish to do. If we were to not pass this today and and the draft plan expires, now the new official plan in in its entirety would come into play, which again is subject to the L P A appeal right now. So I think if this was not approved today for a two-year extension, we would have some legal jeopardy we would have to deal with.
This is a fairly critical, we're at a fairly critical juncture here in terms of assisting Pratt and getting three hundred plus housing units put up in the foreseeable future. Thank you.
Any other questions? Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. So you guys actually just spoke to what I was concerned with. I mean, it's at this juncture, you know, after it's come this far for us to red line and start tweaking and telling them we want them to build different styles of units and, you know, nitpicking to that degree. I don't know that that's really in our best interest. I mean, I'm, I'd like to see housing period come to this area. If it's not everything we'd like it to be, well, it's housing. And at this point, I don't want to think to tie things up in L P A or more more drama than we need to or more legal expense. And, you know, we can ask them. I don't think there's any harm in in Counselor Maine's suggestion of maybe adding a few red lines and talking about it, but I wouldn't want them to watch this meeting and have the takeaway that we're going to start fiddling with stuff that's already been approved and changing it to today's wishes. So that's my only concern. I don't want anything to get in the way of these houses getting built and people be able to, you know, live affordably in our community, whether they're imported to our community or people in our place right now that are precarious and looking for a new home. A missing middle is is a very real thing. I mean, not discounting that at all. But yeah, so I think it's a little late to start fiddling with this particular project and sort of asking them to fit that mold.
Thank you very much, Counselor Gordon. I'm going to call the vote on the motion. We've all heard the motion. All is in favor? So passed. Thank you very much, gentlemen, for coming this evening. We appreciate it as always. Thank you. Next up, we have a COVID update from our CEO, Mr. Dino.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor and and to all members of council. I just wanted to start the COVID update with obviously some some acknowledgement from from the town to our Heritage Awards recipients, Mr. Gordon, Madame Kotey and the Midland Golf and Country Club. Tremendous to see those those community representatives getting that much deserved recognition. And that is one of the consequences of COVID as we've seen. We haven't had much ability to celebrate as as we normally do. So I just wanted to take one moment to acknowledge a very important person to this town who was announced he is retiring, a very handy person to the town. Mr. Glenn Handy will be retiring in five days. And Glenn, if you know Glenn, he's been a really important part of our team and helping to maintain our mechanical devices and they come in many forms in the town, as we all know. So Glenn takes care of that. He he's been a mechanic for some time. He also drove, I think, the buses in both Penetang machine and Midland at one point in his career. But he decided to turn his interest back to his wonderful hobby of restoring motorcycles and vehicles. And I think he's got a fifty-seven Chevy Bel Air that he's going to be spending his time with. So on behalf of everyone at the town, I just wanted to thank Glenn for his tremendous years of service and wish him all the best in his retirement. Now, turning to the COVID update, just just to run it through a few numbers. I think everyone's aware of the situation, but in Simcoe, Muskoka, almost ten thousand cases have been identified in in Simcoe, Muskoka, one hundred and seventy-nine cases year to date in Midland. There've been seventeen deaths year to date in North Simcoe, two hundred and eighteen deaths in Simcoe, Muskoka. Sixteen deaths in the month of April in Simcoe, Muskoka. So certainly taken its toll. At present, there's about forty-five people in hospital suffering there. I think one of those people, in fact, is under the age of ten. So as we've heard, this variant is quite quite extensive in terms of of what it targets and it's it doesn't discriminate. So the stay-at-home orders, as we've all heard, I think, are important instructions that we all take quite seriously. And I I certainly hope our our community continues to do that. In terms of the vaccination effort, over one hundred and sixty-three thousand doses of the vaccine have been administered in Simcoe, Muskoka. One hundred and forty-eight thousand individuals have been have received their first shot. And for the for that very vulnerable sector of the eighty-plus age range, over ninety percent of those people have have received their first dose. So certainly good, good metrics on that side. And again, if you're considering getting the vaccine, we've got our facility obviously running at the rec center and and that's a tremendous operation if you if you've visited it, very, very well staffed and and run. So certainly committing those groups on doing that. With the stay-at-home order, again, the the real emphasis here is really to stay at home and only go for those essential means for getting things that you that you obviously need. Like the grocery exercise is one of those essential things you should do, but try and obviously keep your distance when you're doing those things. Some of our amenities have changed. You've seen things like baseball diamonds, soccer fields, soccer fields, frisbee and golf. Of course, those have all been closed, tennis and pickleball courts, the skate parks, picnic sites. Park washrooms are closed. Those are closed for now. So again, if you can respect those those conditions, that would certainly be appreciated. There are some areas that that still remain open again to to allow people to get outside and and take part in in those activities if they can, off-leash dog parks, which are important. Park benches still available, playgrounds, as we know, that changed over the weekend. So it is allowed for people to to go to the playgrounds. And I'm sure Counselor McGinn's family is is quite anxious to hear that. At the harbor, you can see that we're watching very closely what those regulations are right now. Again, the stay-at-home order is no recreational boating. If you are putting your boat in the water, it's to go to some place and secure it. And that's really what the conditions allow today. So we'll we'll keep an eye on that to see if any changes in that front. But but hopefully people will continue to respect those things. So with that, I think I'll turn it back to you, Deputy Mayor, unless there's any questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dino. I had a quick question for you, then I'll turn it over to Counselor Gordon. I've been asked a couple of times if they have a slip at the town dock. Are they able to put their boat in and bring it to town dock and leave it and be prepared for when the lockdown is over? It's a little bit of confusion if if that is indeed possible. I heard you say that you could do to secure place. So if that is your home home birth, are you able to do that? I have been asked, obviously, quite a few of our residents have a second resident up on Georgian Bay and they'd like to be prepared when the opportunity arises. So I've been asked, so I thought I'd ask you with regards to.
Yeah, if, thank you, Deputy Mayor. If you go to our website, you'll see certainly the detail on the announcement. And if you pay attention to the harbor services area, you'll see that we've tried to indicate that when for seasonal boaters that have a slip at the harbor, you can put your boat in the water and put it at the slip, but it has to be secured. So I hope that answers your question.
Wonderful. It sure does. Thank you. Counselor Gordon?
Thanks. Just some commentary on this. Over the past, since our last meeting, actually, there's been quite a bit of drama when it comes to COVID and and freedom rallies. We're having little mini ones in in Midland and there's much larger ones in like Berry and Toronto. And to a large degree, people are just getting tired of this. They're they're normal law-abiding citizens that, you know, if they saw a no U-turn sign, they wouldn't U-turn. The people that pay their taxes, the people that live by the rules are are starting to come unglued. And I'm not saying they all subscribe to conspiracy theories, but they certainly are seeing the inequity and the flip-flopping bizarre rules that come from the government or reverse the next day. And the thing that I get approached the most about are people's frustration angst about this. And of course, it's easy for me just to say, well, you know, not our problem. We're municipal councillors, it's municipality. All we can do is try and read through the fog and make rules and and keep compliant ourselves. But it's not lost on me or I think or anyone else on on council or staff how absolutely absurd and and horrifying the federal and provincial responses has been to this and how confusing and cloudy it is and how absolutely ridiculous it is, the things that they keep pushing down to municipalities to enforce haphazardly, one day's notice, then it flip-flops. And we have people out taping off, you know, playgrounds, the next day they're cutting the tape off again. Like, it's just, it's, it's actually almost completely absurd. When meanwhile, you know, there's a hundred flights coming into Pearson since April sixth. Hundred international flights still flying and every one of those had a COVID patient on them, bringing variants in. Like, we're bailing out a sinking boat locally and I feel absolutely, you know, pain for the local residents who are fighting for their their survival when it comes to their businesses and feeling that, you know, the lockdowns that they're we're putting them under and the rules we're putting under are all just absolute lunacy when we're still flying people in from around the world unchecked and bring in more variants into the country. So it doesn't change our response. We still have a responsibility to follow the rules. And this is the position I've had to take and will continue to take. I'm a rules guy. But it isn't lost on me how absolutely stupid and ridiculous the federal government, provincial government have been on this response, how how they failed our our citizens with not only the pandemic response with the vaccines, but these ridiculous rules they keep placing that make no sense when you have everyday inflights of of aircraft landing with people coming from countries where they have variants or triple variants or things that are actually attaching to people who are vaccinated and and infecting them. So that's my little rant on this. I hear you. I I follow you. I listen to your messages, I take your calls. There isn't much we can do as local municipal representatives other than to hear your pain and to help where we can. But it is not lost on me how absolutely absurd some of these things are. And I just wanted to put that out there publicly that I'm with you. I still have to follow the rules, even though I think some of them are stupid and misguided, but I'm still going to follow the rules. And I hope that you guys will continue to, until the governments come to their senses and start doing the right thing.
I think it's a rant. I think it's important, Counselor Gordon, to push that narrative from the people you're hearing from to our MP and MPP, the ones representing us at Queens Park and at in in Ottawa. So I think it's very important to, you know, get that message. Unfortunately, our our little municipality, as much as we'd love to, our personal views, we have unfortunately no choice but to follow the rules laid out to us from our our upper government. So.
Absolutely true.
Care to add anything? Sorry, I apologize to answer the question or the comment.
Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor. No, I I mean, I I think we all hear from from our residents and certainly, you know, our town staff and our bylaw officers, our our police force, our health. They are, they are people as well and, you know, they're feeling the consequences of this at a personal level. You know, in the end, we don't get to pick what rules and regulations we have to enforce. And we do get an opportunity to obviously provide our input when they're considering those regulations or orders. We have regular meetings with the health unit on a regular basis and they're inviting our feedback. And we're very direct and very pointed on on the effects that, you know, we're seeing within within the town. But they are also very direct in terms of of sharing the impact they're seeing in the healthcare system. And it's not just about, you know, the unfortunate consequence of people losing their lives. It's it's the capacity of the system to keep other people able to access healthcare services. So it's, it is a, it's an unfortunate situation, as we all know. You know, I've had family businesses that have gone under in the past as well. I know what it's like to lose a business. I know how damaging that is. So I certainly feel for those businesses. Do, is there a light at the end of the tunnel? You know, those the vaccination numbers that I indicated, I think, are certainly encouraging. I wish we had more vaccine. I think the health unit would tell you they wish they had more. Hopefully, that will come sooner than later. But I will tell you, I'm very proud of, I'm proud of the community in in terms of how we've responded. I I see tremendous amount of people trying to help people. And I see that with our town staff, our essential services workers, our health units, you know, our enforcement people every day. It's it's tough on everyone and it's it's tough on them as well, but I'm extremely proud of of everyone and what they're doing.
All said, Counselor Ochesci. Well said. Uh, Counsel Ocheski, then I'll have Mayor Strathern and Counsel McGinn.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just gonna try and break some tension there and ask if you'd tried Tim Horton's new breakfast sandwich, but, uh, I'll pass on that now. Um, COVID fatigue is getting really real. Um, we're seeing it every day. So I really appreciate, uh, your efforts through this challenging time. Uh, it's getting more polarizing. People, friends are losing friends, um, you know, through differences of opinion over COVID and vaccines and all that stuff. We're also losing friends, uh, you know, through drugs and alcohol and mental health issues. So it's an extremely challenging time for everybody. Um, I just encourage everybody to be kind to each other. We're all doing the best that we can with the information that we have and, uh, I, I, again, I'm truly proud of the community and how we've, uh, how we've handled this and it's not easy for any of us and we're all struggling with this and, uh, kudos to the councillors that are still on social media, because it's not a, it's not a very friendly place to be right now. So uh, everybody, I just encourage you to be kind to each other and, uh, we'll get through this.
Thank you. Mayor, Mayor Strathern?
Uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. Um, I've got to a point where I don't like watching the news anymore. Uh, I still, I still do watch it. I watch, uh, international news as well and it seems that some of the I call faux pas that we see here being replicated around the world, not that that's any consolation, but I would suggest to you that what is a consolation is that the residents of Norris Simcoe have managed to kept, keep the numbers as low as they have for such a long period of time, giving our frontline workers locally the opportunity to set up for eventualities that we hope won't, won't occur. And if we keep just following the simple things that they keep repeating over and over again, wear a mask, wash your hands often, keep a social distance, support your local shops in as much as you can. And I think if we continue to do that, we're very, very, very close to overcoming this. Uh, Portugal just approved Johnson and Johnson for, uh, everybody in the country. I believe France has now done the same thing. Most countries now are accepting that AstraZeneca, while there was a bit of a pause to understand what was happening, now realize that those numbers that, that were presented are not that significant relative to other causes of, uh, clotting. And so everybody's now trying to rebuild trust in the AstraZeneca back. Vaccine, they reduced the age to forty. We're just about there. So despite what's going on at Queens Park or despite what's going on in, and in Ottawa, you can take comfort in the fact that you've done a real bang up job of keeping numbers low here. If you keep, if you just keep focusing on that, uh, there is a bright light at the end of the tunnel as we get more and more people vaccinated. I was at the Penetang Machine uh, vaccination center and I tell you, it was, uh, just worked like clockwork. And I've heard the same for the operation, N S S R C, they mirror each other. Uh, and so we're in a good place, uh, despite, I, I get the angst and I understand it fully. Uh, I've got, uh, friends who, uh, who now have COVID and I'm very worried about them. They don't live here, they live in some of the higher, uh, contact centers, uh, like downtown, while actually Raptan area. So I would just say to you, don't lose sight of the fact we're that close to actually getting ahead of this. Please, again, just follow those simple things. Wear a mask, wash your hands off, keep socially distant and as soon as you can, go and get yourself vaccinated. That is the key. More nor, more jabs and arms, the better off we're all going to be. Whatever vaccine you're offered, they're all safe or they wouldn't be offering them. I just, I'll, I'll leave it there.
Well said, Your Worship. Uh, Counsel McGinn?
Hi, um, I wanted to, um, I wanted to, first off, uh, Mr. CEO, I wanted to thank you for the comment you made about my family. Um, and, and for recognizing that, um, what I found really interesting, and I thought this would be an opportune time to talk about it, would be that, um, this would be unheard of. It would be unheard of for a councillor to be sitting here and I've, you know, there's been three of my youngest children come in and I need to thank you all for that. And I'm also going to thank the residents for that, uh, for understanding that with the stay at home order and I'm a single mother, that I have no other alternative. I do have one household that I interact with, but it's not, it's not feasible, you know, just one child with diabetes is just not feasible. So thank you. Thank you very much. Um, when it comes to COVID, the last time that, uh, this is specifically, you know, I'm going to speak to other parents here. Parents, I get it. The last time we had schools go virtual, I was working from home. This time around, I am blue collar cool. Um, I love that. So it's affecting me differently. Um, so I understand from two entirely different perspectives now. And this is not the sort of lesson that I really wanted to have. And I understand that parents did not want to have this lesson. But I get you. I feel it. And if you're struggling, there are so many places that you can call 211. If you're finding that you're overwhelmed, please call 211. If you need to reach out, I think all of my fellow councillors would be willing to accept an email. You need to vent, all of us, I believe, would be willing to send you to the right place. If you need somebody to talk to, you can talk to me. I'm, I'm good with that. But if you're struggling and you're finding that it's hard to navigate during our, our third wave, please, please, mental health matters. Men, your mental health matters. This has nothing to do with whether you're a mother, a father, an aunt. This has to do with every single person, regardless of how you identify, your mental health. And together, we will get through this. We have done a really good job. And for that, I'm thankful. And for these updates, I'm thankful. Thank you for speaking the truth. And thank you for being supportive. And thank you for caring about one another. For the people who have already had the vaccination by choice, thank you so very much for making that choice. Making that choice for yourself, your families and for others. Thank you very much. I appreciate it and I know that your family appreciates it. I know this is tough and we're all going to get through it together. And I'm really truly feeling that there is a lot, there's a lot of community love that is happening. There's a lot of support that is happening. I understand that we can't go out and hug each other, but words matter. Seeing what is happening with some of our small communities, like small business communities and the, the support that is happening within them, my heart is swelling. I know that you're struggling. I understand it. I wish it wasn't happening. Just stay strong. Stay strong because we value you. And if you're struggling, again, please, please reach out 211, call your doctor. If you have a therapist, call your therapist. There is no shame in saying, help me.
Thank you very much, Counsel McGinn. Counsel Maine?
Uh, just a very quick point. Uh, it's amazing to see people, you know, coming in and out of the pharmacy downtown every fifteen minutes with their AstraZeneca shots. It's just awesome seeing it anywhere and everywhere. Um, speaking of that, uh, I just saw a pop-up from Chigamick that they have a pop-up vaccination clinic for uh, people with no fixed address. So people who are suffering homelessness in our community. So if you know people who are suffering from homelessness, please let them know to reach out to Chigamick. It's April thirtieth. It looks like it's all day, ten to four. Um, I don't think it's a walk-in. I think you gotta be signed up somehow. So please reach out to Chigamick any way that you can and reach out to those who, uh, would be eligible for this. Uh, it's just great to see uh, these pop-up vaccination clinics. I know that there's a, for all adults in Bradford, West Guelenbury, uh, these, uh, hotspot, uh, pop-up clinics. And so, you know, this is really inspiring to see, uh, ten million Canadians, twenty-five percent of the Canadian population's vaccinated. We're moving in the right direction in terms of vaccinations and we're just going to hold as hard as we can. As Edwin said, uh, wash your hands. And I'm making a point of wearing extra masks. I know they say try to wear, uh, maybe two. And I've been trying to push the limits of what my ears can hold. So again, just be really mindful of that. And, uh, and they're saying the CDC, they actually made a comment that surface cleaning is less of an important, we were, as we were washing our groceries and our fruit, fruit last year, again, it's very much more about protecting your, uh, airborne, uh, protecting your breath, uh, while indoors. And if you can't, then of course try to distance. Okay, thank you for these updates. I think we're all greatly appreciating them because as we know, the rules keep changing week in, week out. So thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. Any, uh, any other questions or comments? Any last words? Um, uh, Mr. CEO?
Here on mute. Sorry, no. Thank you. Thank you all for, uh, the support and, uh, I think those are all obviously very, very relevant, uh, comments about the effects that everyone's uh, feeling. And certainly I think, um, I think everyone's through all of this, I think a lot of us are obviously appreciating things in a much different light. Nowadays, I think we're all recalibrating on those things that are most important to us. And perhaps one, that's one of the good consequences of this. Thank you.
Very well said. And, um, Counsel McGinn was on the mark with, it's all about your family. So, uh, let's hope we have our family to at least have our support out there. So thank you, everyone. Great, uh, update. And, uh, we'll move on to the next item, which is notice of motion. And I understand Counsel Ocheski has one. And Counsel Maine, Counsel Ocheski?
Uh, thank you very much. I'll give a little nod to former councillor Pat File on this one. She did bring this to the last council and it was, uh, unfortunately defeated before it ever hit, um, before it ever hit the council agenda. So just a little nod to councillor, uh, former councillor Pat File. Uh, so for my notice of motion for the evening is that staff be asked to prepare a report outlining the pros and cons of backyard chickens, including what neighboring municipalities and similar sized municipalities are doing, and come back to council with some points or sorry, with some options for potential rollout. Um, I know it's a polarizing issue, uh, still not really sure, uh, what side of the issue I'm on. It is something that I know there's a, a want for in town. There's a a group growing and, uh, I know it's become a polarizing topic. There's some people that are completely against it. So uh, kind of throw myself on the, you know, make myself a little vulnerable by putting this out there, but, uh, you know, we did it with backyard fires and now I don't, uh, hear many complaints about that. So uh, if there is an opportunity for people to have, um, you know, some free eggs within their household or some free chickens, I think, uh, no better time than now. So, uh, I'd love to hear that report. Uh, bonus points if it's this year, uh, no disrespect. I understand how, um, how, how busy staff are. So, um, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Counsel Ocheski. Counsel Maine, you had a notice?
Yes, uh, thank you Deputy Mayor. I actually have two. Um,
Wonderful.
I'll, I'll read, uh, the motions, um,
Please.
Uh, that staff be directed to review the town's existing tree and bench dedication program with the goal of establishing dedication opportunities on King Street, including the permanent benches, seasonal benches and street trees with a report detailing options to be brought forward at a future meeting. Um,
What a lovely idea.
I wonder, I wonder where that one came from. Uh, and the second motion, um, is that staff be directed to review the timing and technology of the traffic signals installed on King Street, Bay Shore to Yong, to balance the needs of pedestrians and vehicles with the goal of increasing accessibility, pedestrian safety and ease of use with a report detailing options to be brought forward to a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counsel Maine. Any other, uh, notice of motion to bring forward this evening? I see none. We'll move on to general announcements. Uh, any announcements? Counsel Gordon, then I'll go to Counsel Cunningham.
Thanks. I just had a couple here. They're kind of just questions, but this is the time. Um, so I'd, I'd send an email into the clerk's office, ask me if there was a sort of curated list of outstanding staff reports. Uh, I know based on the notice of motions just came forward tonight when they're debated and we'll have, uh, you know, more staff reports if those are successful. There, there's been a lot of staff reports that come as a result of things we've, uh, agreed on over the past couple of years. And some are, you know, quite far behind, some I've actually completely forgotten about. And I, I remember them sometimes when I'm having a conversation. So I've reached out to the clerk and said, you know, you guys must have a list of these. And so she's replied, yes, she has. And, uh, she actually committed to get to me the list by the end of the week. What I thought might be good is if it was shared with all of council and it was in a place like on her sharepoint, we could all look at it some interval and just see how burdened they are, what the expected, uh, times of, of delivery to council are for some of these. And, uh, just to get an idea of what, what, you know, we pass them the ball and then we forget about it. At least I do. Maybe you guys all remember all your ones, but I know I've put a lot of motions forward since, uh, I got started here. So uh, I just wanted to throw that out there and that, uh, the clerk is very responsive and that is the thing that's coming. In case you see that in your inbox, that was me. I don't know if, if Karen wants to speak to that. And the second thing was, uh, the roundabout announcement. I, I just shared that innocently as I often do town press releases. And, uh, it kind of went bananas. Uh, it was full on viral. It's right up there with some of the most shared things that I've ever published. I didn't actually just share the towns exactly the same because I, the picture that I thought the town used about the, you know, a road closed or whatever it was, didn't really communicate what the press release was about. So I put my own picture in and then John Todd dug one up from the county that actually shows the proposed or not proposed, the roundabout that's going in. And I should, I put that on my Facebook page and it's gone to almost twenty-seven thousand people. It went bananas, three hundred and thirty-three shares and a lot of comments. And I took phone calls and emails and of course I'm deferring, this is a county thing, not a Midland thing. I didn't, you know, decide to do this because there's a lot of people that are against it. Some people are for it. But I did take stock of the comments that we got, and this is more for, uh, the deputy mayor and mayor, because you guys would have kicked this around at county. The concern was, is primarily raised repeatedly by truckers, guys that drive the big trucks, wondering how they're going to navigate all of the big trucks, like they come from the, the waste um, transfer site that have to make those turns. They, they, uh, typically we're going to occupy both lanes of that roundabout in order to make the turns and then make the sharp curve up. They're, they're concerned that it's going to be a real traffic hazard. And did they think about that number of heavy trucks that move in and out of that? That intersection when they, when they designed the roundabout back in twenty seventeen? And I'm just wondering if you had heard or this, any, any discussion like that happened at the county about the fact that there is so many large, you know, triple axel, uh, gigantic trucks full of garbage that have to make those turns. So I committed to bouncing that out and seeing if you guys had any comment on that. Not that we have any say in it, but perhaps you could provide some revelation.
Well, yeah. Thank you very much, Counsel Gordon. I'm not sure if this is Madam Clerk, if this is something we can proceed with, uh, conversation, sort of not agenda item, but, uh, I'm fine to have, uh, Mr. Campbell share some, uh, uh, information if that's fine with the will of the rest of our, the members. Mr. Campbell, share, care to share a bit on this and we'll, uh, if we want to do any more of a formal conversation, but I appreciate the heads up, Counsel Gordon. I'll be sure to bring it to county council. Uh, but I'm just concerned it is not an agenda item at this time, but Mr. Campbell, allow a bit of leeway?
Yeah, just quickly, the, the county went through a, a municipal class environmental assessment on, on this project and the trail project. Uh, over the last, uh, couple of years, they had public consultation, uh, they received input at those meetings from, from general public and, and businesses. And yes, they have considered the, the traffic volumes and the traffic uh, modal type on that road. And, uh, yes, it's got, it, it will be designed, uh, to, to handle those trucks. So many of you have driven, uh, between Wasaga Beach and Collingwood. Those are, were two of the first, uh, roundabouts that, uh, the county did, uh, or the province and the county did together. Uh, so they've had learnings from, from that experience. And, uh, you know, there'll be many more roundabouts designed and built in the county over the coming years. Uh, Horseshoe Valley Road has a number, uh, designed, uh, to be built on Horseshoe Valley Road, for example. So this is well-designed. It has taken into consideration the, the modal inputs. And in the past, when there have been truck accidents there, it's typically been speed and them not stopping for a stoplight. We can't fix that, you know, the drivers are going to have to, uh, adapt to a roundabout and I do expect it to be a learning process for our residents when, when it's built. It will take some time to learn how to use them. But once everyone does, uh, they are much safer than a signalized intersection. And that is the reason that roundabouts are, are, were developed in Europe. They've been across Ontario for a number of years. They are safer because you don't get the T-bone, uh, ninety-degree, uh, collisions when accidents happen. They are much safer than a normal intersection.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell. And if I, if I could, I'll just add, uh, one point. I, I, uh, had the opportunity to talk to a couple of other municipalities that have brought in these and they had the exact same concern as what we're hearing online. Three years ago, when they opened Highway twenty-six, they don't have any concerns whatsoever now. So I think I, I get the concern, change is always a tough one. I drive to Thornberry every day. You want to talk about trucks, there's every truck that goes from Toronto to miss, to Owen Sound travels Highway twenty-six through Collingwood, Thornberry, along the twenty-sixth and, and beyond. So uh, we're only talking about from Midland to Penetang. We're talking Beaufort, Owen Sound, Thornberry, uh, Collingwood. Every truck goes down that Highway twenty-six. There's three different roundabouts that they would go around and, uh, I'm hearing that. I'm hearing that from the other, our neighbor, our friends, uh, that there really is no issue. But with that said, you know, it is a learning curve. I think, uh, Mr. Campbell is correct that it will be a big learning curve, but I believe, you know, the right turns, they say, though, that left turn is the most dangerous, and all it is is right turns. You make a right turn off, right turn off, right turn off. So everything I understand and hear about it, it really is, uh, a much safer way to to travel.
But we're going to drop it from eighty, so we're not going from sixty to eighty, then down to fifty. Are they going to get rid of that that short run of eighty on your way down the hill towards the roundabout?
And you? I'm not sure. Mr. Campbell, do you know? Well, and then we'll close up this conversation.
Yep, thanks.
Uh, that is in the design, uh, for, uh, speed adjustments on that road. I just don't recollect, uh, tonight, uh, what that change is, but it will be reduced, uh, along portions of that road and potentially, uh, the entirety of it, if, you know, the traffic, uh, challenges warrant it.
Thank you very much, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you. I know it's a county issue, but I do appreciate having a brief talk about it.
We appreciate the, uh, heads up there, Counselor Gordon. Thank you. Counselor Cunningham, announcement?
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. A couple of things. First of all, just a reminder to people as we do get back into our backyard fire burning season. If you can let your neighbors know when you're going to have a fire, it's just a piece of courtesy that goes a long way to make very happy neighbors, especially as the weather gets hotter and people start opening their windows. Uh, the second item, we have a project moving forward through the cultural alliance in the heart of Georgian Bay that is called a cultural asset map. We are collecting many, many aspects of culture throughout the five council areas of Tiny, Tay, Midland, Penetang, Gushin and Bosley First Nation. This includes heritage items, places, spaces and stories, as well as artisans, creatives and so on. There is an event, a virtual event at seven o'clock on Monday for anybody who wants to participate in building out this cultural asset map called easily enough to understand, learn how to drop a pin on the cultural asset map. You can register for that and access it through cultural alliance.ca or through their Facebook page. The event is listed there as well. So I encourage you, if you are have any interest in building this out, it is a magnificent resource that we will have that will allow amazing collaboration and a way to really enrich our own lives as we weave our cultures together. And also invite anyone that you think should be featured on the map to have a peek at that and find out how they can participate.
Thank you very much, Counselor Cunningham. I have up next, uh, your worship, and then counsel again, and then counsel me.
Uh, thank you, Deputy Mayor. Uh, the council began spoke earlier about, um, you're having difficulties to reach out to two on one, not be afraid to acknowledge that you're having difficulties. Uh, on the the week of May three thirds rather through to the ninth is, uh, mental health week, and, uh, there is a program called Getting Your Mental Health in Motion, which is being sponsored locally. Uh, get in touch with, uh, the folks at Waypoint on their website for particulars about that. Don't, you know, get outdoors, uh, since now lifted apparently the restrictions on some of the outdoor facilities. Um, you know, go for a walk, keep your distance, of course. Um, and and don't be afraid to, like, if you're feeling a bit lonely, get on, so get on to, uh, you know, FaceTime or whatever social media you you have to connect with friends and family. Um, secondly, I'd just like to congratulate the Cultural Alliance for securing a seventy five thousand dollar trillion grant to actually do the cultural mapping program that, uh, Counselor Cunningham, uh, has spoken to. Uh, and I'd especially like to say thank you to Karen Neeling, our cultural coordinator, who shepherded crafted and then shepherded that through the process and brought it to a successful conclusion for all the people from the Alliance who had input in crafting and making that happen. And finally, uh, it goes without saying that we have a pretty dedicated group of people working here, the town of Midland. Uh, you might recall that recently our C L was acknowledged by his peers. Um, I was received some correspondence from the Canadian Association of Municipal Administrators, uh, who provide long service recognition awards, celebrating and recognizing dedication to public service and municipal management. Uh, this year, this C A M A acknowledged the commitment of our Executive Director of Corporate Services and Town Solicitor, Tina La Coco, for her ten years of dedication to municipal service in, uh, in a management capacity. On behalf of council and her colleagues in the corporation, I'd thank, uh, take this opportunity rather to congratulate Mr. Coco for her continuing dedication to public service and municipal management and for her contributions to the senior leadership group. Indeed, you know, the entire corporation, uh, congratulations and and thank you, Mr. Coco. That's it for me.
So C O, something yet?
I thought on on behalf of teen, I know if Tina is extremely, um, wonderful person that we are certainly privileged to have, uh, working for us, and, uh, she is the last person to certainly, uh, sing her praises. So I will certainly sing them for her. Uh, she is a tremendous asset to us, not just for her, her, um, technical abilities as a lawyer, but what she's doing on the corporate services side, that's a big portfolio. Managing I T and finance and the clerks department as well. So uh, we're certainly privileged to have have her on, and, uh, it was, it was great to see the acknowledgement of her experience in the sector. So, uh, thank you again for for providing that recognition for her. And again, thanks to Tina for joining our team.
Well said. Thank you very much. Uh, Counselor McGinn, announcement?
Yes, so tomorrow is Earth Day. Um, and yes, Counselor Maine, did I steal your thunder? Oh, okay. Just wasn't sure if you're gonna like put a card up if nobody said it. Um, so my kids are all, uh, they know they're doing a whole bunch of school work on, uh, you know. You did. Yes, sorry, my daughter just come here. You want to tell everybody what you did?
I made a poster.
So the kids are in on it. So it's up to us to support our youth in understanding what Earth Day is about. And as the adults in this virtual room, um, we have this, we have to actually set an example. We can speak it, but we have to actually set an example. So let's, you know, being safe and social distance, make sure that we're doing something tomorrow. It might be, it might look different. That's okay. Let's just together, you know, take take care of our mother earth because it is the planet that we live on. Um, the other thing is, uh, the other thing that I wanted to mention was, um, that, uh, the Georgian Bay Native Friendship Center, uh, recently sadly lost an elder. Um, and this woman was somebody who was important in my life in very integral private ways. Uh, so MJ passed away. And, um, I'm, I want to give her some recognition. I also want to give the Women's Association some recognition for the work that they're doing in our community, and I want to uplift her and her ancestors and ask that anybody who's listening to this, um, has some summer, lays some tobacco and honors her because she is now an ancestor for all of us who have known her. But that's all.
Thank you very much. My condolences to the family and, uh, my condolences to you. Um, Counselor Maine?
Well, that was very touching. Thank you, our counsel again. Um, no, I wasn't going to mention Earth Day. I was going to mention a a Midland Mirror article that I read of a local, uh, Angie. I call her Angie Nolan. That's all I know her. Um, she needs a kidney, and I think it's a great awareness article about, um, advocating for people to consider becoming living donors. Uh, she needs a kidney, and she has a rare blood type, O negative. So you need to find a suitable donor. Also, the word is out there to continue, uh, to consider, uh, becoming a organ donor yourself. On Ontario and Canada, we still have an opt in system. It'd be great if the federal created an opt out system. That's been very successful elsewhere to increase the, uh, organ donation rates. But becoming a living donor was an interesting read, a great article, and, uh, and if anything that we can do to raise awareness for that and, uh, share the word, uh, for all the people suffering out there that need, uh, organ transplants. Um, they're in our thoughts, but more importantly, we're trying to get the word out to find suitable donors for them, um, so that they can live a full quality life. So Angie, uh, we all support you. We all love you, and we're going to try to do everything we can to find you a donor. So thank you and best of luck to you and your family. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Counselor Maine. Any other, uh, announcements this evening? I see none. I'm not sure, your worship, you had the motion to, uh, get us out of this, uh, committee of the whole?
I believe I do, Deputy Mayor.
Wonderful.
Uh, moved by Counselor McGinn, seconded by Counselor Ocheski, that the Committee of the Whole rise and report. Comments or questions? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. Next. I have a motion by Counselor Maine, seconded by Deputy Mayor Ross, that the recommendations of the Committee of the Whole for the meeting of April twenty one, twenty twenty one be adopted as resolutions of council. All those in favor? Thank you. That to carries. Next, moved by Counselor Gordon and seconded by Counselor Maine, that the following bylaws, bylaw twenty twenty one dash sixteen, temporary use by law for lands at one seven four Pillsbury Drive. Bylaw twenty twenty one dash eighteen, fire safety grant transfer payment agreement with the province for funding under the fire safety program to support increased training opportunities. Bylaw twenty twenty one dash one nine, appointing municipal law enforcement officers. Bylaw twenty twenty one twenty, site plan agreement with Pintor Electric Limited on lands known municipally as one forty eight Pillsbury Drive. Be passed and enacted. Comments or questions on that motion? Seeing none, all in favor? Thank you. That carries. I have a motion by Counselor Pro, seconded by Counselor Ocheski, that bylaw twenty twenty one dash seventeen, being a bylaw to adopt the proceedings of the regular council meeting held April twenty one, twenty twenty one, be passed and enacted. All those in favor of the motion? Thank you. That carries. And as always, the motion of the evening moved by Counselor Cunningham, seconded by Counselor McGinn, that this regular meeting of council adjourned at twenty forty three P M. All in favor? Thank you. Be safe, stay well. Remember, wash your hands, wear the mask, keep distance, and we'll all, we'll all come out of this together. Oh, and get your shot, too. Right?
Have a good night, everyone. Good night, everybody. Thank you.